Okay. Therefore, at this point in time, I would like to call this regular Planning Commission meeting of May 26, 2020 to order. Sarah, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes. Please rate, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Yes. Commissioner Kano.
Press them.
Commissioner Garcia. Make sure everyone's unmuted. Just one moment, we're just making sure we have everyone unmuted. Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner Rivera.
I'm here, go.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
And for the record, Vice Chair Contreras Leo will be absent today. Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please describe the way and to the public as to how you can access this virtual meeting?
Yes, this meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID 315965149, followed by the pound sign. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last four, three numbers listed on the caller ID. When you are called on, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak at this point in time?
If you'd like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please press star nine now. We'll wait a few seconds to see if we have anybody that has expressed a desire. There, no one has expressed their desire to speak on a non-agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, this is DeRuth DeZerka with Mobile Inc. calling for the service station, testing service station. I never, you never called out her name?
Yes, your item is item number three. We will call on you when we get to that item.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. No further public comments for non-agenda items at this point in time, Madam Secretary.
That's correct.
Okay, with that said, we will close the public comments for non-agenda items and we'll move on to the consent calendar. First item on the consent calendar is to make a motion on the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 11, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
So vote.
Okay, do we have a second?
Commissioner Rivera, second.
Okay, so Commissioner Nguyen was voted for and Rivera was second. With no further discussion, all those in, oh, Madam Secretary, let's do a roll call of the minutes.
Commissioner Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes with Commissioner Contreras, Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Okay. And with that said, can we have a motion to approve Vice Chair Contreras Leo's absence?
So vote.
All right, and do we have a second? Second is Norma? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can we do a roll, a roll call on the vote for absence, the absenteeism, absence of Cynthia Contreras Leo?
Yes. Commissioner Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Chair, Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-one with Contreras Leo absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this point in time, we're going to move on to the business calendar and resolutions. The formal action of the Planning, let me just make a few notes here. The formal action by the Planning Commission shall become effective after a 10-day appeal period unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal actions will become effective on the day following the hearing and decision by the City Council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the Clerk of the Council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the Commission's actions. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Now is the time, this, this is the time and place to consider item number one, general plan consistency finding for the fiscal year 2020-2021 capital improvement programs. This is not a public hearing, but this is just a, a brief presentation to advise the Planning Commission of the upcoming general plan consistency findings. Please note that there's no decision on this. Staff will, staff will now present. Please do so.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is Jason Gabriel with the Public Works Agency. I'm here to present the fiscal year 2021 proposed capital improvement program. Just going to highlight briefly some recently completed projects. Walnut Pump Station.
I apologize, this is Commissioner Fan. I'm having a really hard time hearing him. I think he's too far from the mic.
Can you hear me better now?
Barely.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to highlight some recently completed projects briefly. Walnut Pump Station over near Santa Ana High School. We modernized a water pump station. Recently opened and ready for the community once, once parks are open for the community again is Mari Posse Park over next to Garfield Elementary School. We're wrapping up the Center Street Urban Greening, which is a new amenity at Jerome Park. Introducing some walkways and drought tolerant landscaping to beautify the closed Center Street. And then a while back, we completed the Civic Center 88 access from the plaza in front of the City Hall parking structure up to Council Chambers. Looking towards fiscal year 2021, on your screen, you can see a number of funding sources that are used to fund the program. Among them are gas tax, measuring fair share, as well as a number of fees collected from developers, including park acquisition and development fees, drainage assessment fees, and transportation system improvement area fees, as well as revenues from our water and sewer enterprises. Those are all the local funds. And under the grant funds, we have active transportation, which are typically pedestrian and bike improvements to make the roadway safer and available for all users. And then we also have OC Streetcar Funds, which are funding staff's coordination of streetcar construction with OCTA. We are tracking as part of COVID-19, the reduction of some of these funding sources, including gas tax and measuring fair share, based on what the state and OCTA are providing us. And we are tracking that as part of our budget for the CIP so that we can make sure that we're not overprogramming projects. With that, just a real quick look at our CIP, our one-year summary page. We list projects by category. We have street improvement projects, traffic improvement projects, utility projects, and facility projects that include parks. What we highlight in this one-year report, up on the top in the orange band, are funding sources that are typical and also their totals. We provide subtotals by category and also category totals. Looking at the proposed one-year CIP, high level, we're looking at about $75 million of funding this year. Broken up, again, as I mentioned, street improvements, traffic improvements, utility, drainage, and lighting improvements, and municipal improvements. The bulk of these are going to be in the utility category. About 50% of the pot is for water and sewer improvements. We have about $21 million in street, $13 million in traffic, and 3.3 in municipal improvements. Some highlights in the road improvements, we were successful in securing construction funding for Bristol Street Phases 3A and 4. I know you guys aren't tracking these numbers, so 3A is the segment between Civic Center and Washington, and 4 is the segment between Warner and St. Andrew. We now have the construction funding in place, and we'll be planning to release a construction contract for that project in next fiscal year. Some other highlights, we are using the component of gas tax called the roadway maintenance rehabilitation account. That's a component of gas tax to maintain a number of arterial streets. In traffic, we have $13 million of improvements. And as mentioned previously, a lot of those funds are in the mobility safety category, making safe routes to schools, as well as introducing protected bike lanes and introducing safety enhancements for pedestrians and bicycle users. On the publicly utility side, we have $37 million with a number of sewer and water improvements, as well as the infrastructure, including the wells at a couple locations, and upgrades to various facilities that are specific to the water and sewer infrastructure. And then finally, we have municipal facilities, and there's a number of park projects here. One of the highlights is the, hopefully the final piece of funding for the new Santa Ana Zoo Giant Wolver Otter Exhibit. Looking from the one-year CIP for next fiscal year on towards the next seven years, we also plan out for a total CIP in that seven-year period of $99 million. And you can see the various breakdowns on your screen. With that, I've concluded my presentation. If you have any questions?
Just one second. Try it again. Are there any questions? Can they hear me? Chair, I don't believe there are any questions.
Okay. One comment I just want to ask is, was, was the presentation as blurred on your screen as it was on my screen? Because I virtually could not read anything that was presented on the slides.
We are going to check on our end, just one moment.
I was able to see it pretty clearly.
You were?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners?
This is coming, I, yeah, it's five. Yeah, me too.
You could or couldn't?
We could.
I was able to.
Okay. All right.
I think the only, this is Norma, I think the only slide that was a little bit hard to read was the one-year budget example.
Yeah.
Because I think the numbers were a little small, blurry, yes.
Okay. All right. Gabriel, I guess there's no further questions. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate your effort to bring it to us this evening. And with that, we will move on to the next item.
Chair, can we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Okay, that's, that's fine. I didn't, didn't see that. All right. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution? Hello? Do we have a motion?
This is Commissioner Kano.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Kano.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Uh, this is, and we're in second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, will you do a roll vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair, motion passes six-one with Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Thank you. I just, I appreciate that I didn't catch that. Thank you for catching that. All right, moving on to the business calendar, public hearings, public hearing protocol. I will, will now review the process of the public hearings as everybody knows what to expect. Staff will present, staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the Commission. Public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. Public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the Commission with formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name, address, strictly voluntary. State whether or not you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge, any gossip, emotion, or petition. A clear, avoid gossip, emotion, and petition, repetition. A clear, concise, and non-repetitive argument is most effective. We'll move on to item number two. Now is the time and place to consider item number two, final environmental impact report number 2020-01, general plan amendment number 2020-02, and the amendment and application number 2020-01 for projected, for project located at 2300, 2310, and 2320, South Red Hill Avenue. This matter was continued from the May 11 regular meeting. At this, at that meeting, the public hearing was open, public testimony was heard, and the public hearing was closed. Tonight, the Commission will deliberate and render a decision on this matter. Decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days, calendar days. Also, please note, Commissioner Fan will recuse herself from the matter due to conflict of interest. She will leave the meeting and return after a decision on the matter has been made. Staff will now provide a brief update. Thank you.
Evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Can you hear me? Chairman, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. As mentioned by the Chairman, this item was brought to you before on May 11, and it was continued to today to address some additional questions and concerns that was brought up by the Commission as well as the public. Moving on to page number 15, or slide 15.
I'm not getting any slide changes here.
We have a four-second delay.
It's a little delayed, but you should be seeing the new slide in a couple of minutes, Chairman.
Seconds, seconds, couple of seconds.
Couple of seconds. The slide number 15 should be up right now. As indicated last meeting, the project consists of the demolition of three existing industrial buildings and the construction.
Not seeing a slide. Not seeing a slide change.
It should be on slide number 15, Chairman.
You don't see the blue slide number 15?
Ask him to refresh, refresh.
All I have is, I, item number one, I have item number one in the budget. That's what I have on my screen right now.
Is there a way to refresh?
I'm gonna have to.
Yeah, because it's, it's showing on mine. And mine's behind, too.
Chair, there should be a slide bar. Chair, there should be a slide bar at the bottom that's in red. If you can move the slide bar all the way to the right-hand side.
Could we, would we get an email of the slides when it's accessible for everybody to just have their coffee?
Tell the mic.
Yeah, I'm good.
Do you have the, do you have the, do you have the PowerPoint?
All right.
Commissioners, this is Ali speaking. Vince Fregoso is going to be emailing out the PowerPoint presentation to each one of you in a moment, so we appreciate your patience. Commissioners, the PowerPoint was just sent out, so we'll resume in a moment.
This is Commissioner Kano. I have received the PowerPoint already.
Thank you. Chair McLaughlin, have you received the PowerPoint?
I have not.
And you, on the YouTube, you still don't have slide 15 coming up, correct?
Hi, on the YouTube. On the YouTube, I don't have any numbers, slide 15. I have a slide that says Bowery Mixed Use Development. With the application EIR, that's what I have.
Okay, the slide that should be up, that we have up, says project description for, and it is for the Bowery project, but it's project description, but we will, okay, we will wait until you receive the PowerPoint so you can follow along with the PowerPoint that was just sent.
Chairman Mark, this is Vince Fregoso. Can you hear me? I've sent it to both your, or like, and your stuff, emails. Yes? Okay. All right. I don't have it. I don't want to check, I just, oh.
Chairman, when you refreshed the browser playing the YouTube video, was that able to help, or is it still stuck?
It was able to help. I'm just, yeah, it was, it was able to help.
Okay, great. So on your screen now, you see the project description slide?
No, I'm actually downloading to see if I can get this. Sorry about the difficulties.
No worries.
Do you want staff to proceed with the presentation while you try to get the PowerPoint downloaded?
Uh, it should be about 15 more seconds, I think.
Okay, okay.
That's close here.
industrial buildings and the construction of a mixed-use development with six buildings consisting of 1,100 residential units with two parking spaces per unit and 8,000 square feet of commercial space with 400 parking spaces. The units are for rent and they will be at market rate. At this time, the developer is not proposing condos or a condominium subdivision. Furthermore, the commercial square footage of the project has been designed to be flexible to accommodate a variety of different uses such as grocery stores as well as other uses such as a gym and smaller retail tenant spaces as well. The project site is within the boundaries of the Santa Ana Unified School District. For that, the developer will be paying a school fee that will be determined during building permit issuance. In terms of the construction phasing, the construction for the project will be completed with one phase and estimated to be completed within 24, 27 months. Moving on to page number 16 or Slide 16. As mentioned earlier, the item was originally brought before this commission on May 11th and was continued to tonight's meeting in order to address a couple of concerns that were brought by the City of Tustin as well as the city did receive two letters from two different law firms representing Alliance for Environmental Responsibility and the other one representing Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And the last item, the commission did have some additional concerns and questions about the proposed open space. Now moving on to Slide number 17. As indicated, staff did receive two letters from two different law firms on May 11th. Since the meeting, staff has worked with its environmental consultant to review the letters that were sent, and we also did draft a memorandum that was attached to the staff report as Exhibit 1, addressing the two law firms' concerns. With that, staff believes that the final EIR properly addresses the concerns brought by these two law firms. Moving on to Slide number 18. In addition to the two law firms' letters, the city also did receive a letter from the City of Tustin that at that time they were requesting a continuance of the project which the commission did grant. On May 21st, the City of Tustin submitted an additional letter requesting another continuance on the project or until the concerns of the City of Tustin have been addressed by staff. Just to note, the letter that was sent on May 21st did not provide additional comments or new comments, and staff believes that the final EIR properly addresses their concerns with regards to open space traffic and noise. Moving on to Slide number 19. The last item of concern was with regards to the proposed open space for the project. Slide number 19 has a site plan indicating the proposed open space, which is being depicted or shown and grained and blue and light grained. And just to recap, the project is proposing a total of 5.76 acres of open space, which amounts to 39% of the lot area. As indicated on the staff report, the city does not have a requirement for developments to require onsite parkland. The parkland comparison was used for the purposes of clarifying some of the comments that were addressed by the City of Tustin. So overall, as mentioned, the project is proposing 5.76 acres of open space, of which 2.44 acres will be publicly accessible, and of that, the Central Paseo and Plaza make up about 1.32 acres alone. In addition, the project will provide 3.32 acres of private open space, which include the rooftop amenity decks, the courtyards, and the residential patios and balconies. Lastly, as required by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, the applicant will be paying a park-in-new fee that is estimated at $4.1 million. As mentioned earlier by Public Works as part of their capital improvement program, these fees are usually used by the city's Parks and Rights Agency for the construction of new parks or for the rehabilitation of existing parks. Moving on to Slide number 20. This is a rendering that the applicant provided that pretty much depicts a portion of the Central Paseo and Plaza that illustrates how it can be used for a farmer's market. And this is also just to show that those publicly accessible areas can be programmed to include farmer's markets as well as movie nights and other outdoor activities. Slide number 21 also has a rendering of the Central Paseo, again showing how it can be programmed to activate the space, which in more or less is kind of somewhat comparing seen to a park that has a farmer's market. So the publicly accessible area will be able to accommodate these type of activities. All right, and now moving on to Slide number 22. And then this is just more or less private open space. As mentioned at our last meeting, most, all of these buildings do have courtyards as well as rooftop amenities that will be provided for the residents, and this is just a depiction of Building A's rooftop as well as Building C's courtyard area, which both will have pools as well as other fitness centers and other amenities that will be used for its Now moving on to Slide number 23. One of the Commissioners also brought up some concerns with regards to screening of the car lifts. So Slide number 3 right now is basically depicting a line of sight to your right, which usually shows that the car lifts would not be visible from the street. In addition to that, on the left, we did provide an example of what some type of screening can potentially look like to be able to screen the car lifts. So just to ensure, the car lifts would not be visible from the street nor would they be visible from any of the residential units. In addition, staff is working with the applicant to ensure that the car lifts will also not be visible from any of the rooftop amenity decks. All right, moving on to Slide number 24, and that is pretty much just wrapping up staff's presentation. And staff's recommendation, as previously indicated, it is basically to recommend that the city council certify and adopt EIR number 2020-01, approve General Plan number 2020-02 to change the general plan land use destination of the property from professional and administrative office to district center, and approve amendment application or the zone change number 2020-01 to change the zoning of the property from lot industrial to specific development number 96. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. We're here to answer any of your questions.
Parking with the car lift, does that mean all the apartments or just partially some of the apartments will have car lifts?
Commissioner Conno, just to recap, the development is proposing 2,200 residential parking stalls, of which I believe 221 of those will be via car lifts, and those will be occupied by the residential component of the project only.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Nwet. No problem. Commissioner Rivera. No other questions? Okay, gentlemen, I- Before the meeting started, I expected that we would see some of those questions answered inside of this package that you presented this evening, but very little was covered. And the one area that was concerned is the park, the public park and recreational area. You know, in the, in the original presentation that we had last week, it denoted that there was 4.21 acres of land, and now all of a sudden in this presentation, that has gone from 4.2 acres to 5 point, I don't know, if you go back to your slide.
Chairman.
Chairman, can you hear me?
I'm here.
The 4.2 acres does not take into account some of the areas for walkways as well as a portion of the Central Paseo as well as the Plaza. The 4.21 acres pretty much reflects those spaces, as mentioned, without those additional square footage. When the applicant did submit an application, staff did request that those walkways that do make up portions of the Central Paseo as well as the Plaza be taken out. But in total, in terms of square footage, with the combined Central Paseo and Plaza, the total open space being provided on this project is 5.76 acres.
Slide, if we can.
Slide number 19 is being shown right now, Chairman.
519. Okay, so in essence, in essence, at this point in time, we really, I mean, other than walkways, that's the only public area that we have at this point in time is the walkways. And what you've denoted here in green, which I believe is the grass around the buildings themselves, that's what's considered to be parkland?
Chairman, if we're using parkland as a comparison, as mentioned earlier, 2.44 acres will be publicly accessible open space, which make up the walkways as well as some landscape areas, and also includes the Central Paseo that breaks up Building A and B as well as the Plaza for the commercial component of the project.
Okay.
And in addition to that, the project is also providing 3.32 acres of private open space, which will be provided via the rooftop amenity decks as well as the courtyards for each building. Again, that is only going to be accessible for the resident and its visitors.
Right. It states that over half of it is really, more than half of it is going to be private, and that's fine. I'm not wanting to go through it anymore. The next item that we talked about was, there was a discussion in the last meeting about a surplus of money, and we all agreed that there wasn't really a surplus of money, what we agreed to in the conversation I had with you and Ally, you and each, the two of you, was the fact that there was going to be a certain amount of expenses each year and a certain amount of revenue coming in, assuming it was coming in from property tax and sales tax with the buildings, the commercial buildings that are on the property. I don't see that discussion or that information here at all.
Chairman, thank you for your question. So that information is still in the original staff report for the project, which is attached to the packet that you have before you tonight dated May 26. So one of the exhibits is the full Planning Commission staff report from May 11th, and in the May 11th staff report, Exhibit 11 is the economic and fiscal impact analysis for the project. So that information remains unchanged from the last Planning Commission meeting. So essentially, just to summarize, the fiscal and economic impact analysis found that the project would generate about $2.5 million annually in benefits comprised of property tax, sales tax, and other revenues. So those are positive revenues.
Right.
But would also result in $1.5 million in annual expenditures. That's negative, you know, revenues to the city. So that's police, fire, and other city services. So when you take the positive and the negative, the net number is about a million annually, and that's a positive number. So just to clarify, just like we did in the last meeting too, it's not a surplus, it's not like a budgetary surplus, it's just a net positive annual fiscal impact.
Okay, so it is just an annual of 1 million per period, that's it?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I have a question to that. Mark, if I may.
Yeah, please, Norma, go ahead. I don't mean to, don't mean to take all the time, sorry.
Just the numbers that you want, so I think I'll read out to you just now, is there any scenario where we end up with a deficit where we don't make the 1 million in revenue? Or could be lost in that?
Thank you Commissioner. It's very difficult to speculate on all the different scenarios that could play out here, but I suppose, you know, if the economy were to enter like a severe recession to the point where property taxes, property values plummeted, and subsequently, you know, local property tax shares plummeted with it, as well as, you know, virtually, you know, a massive drop in sales tax revenues, then yes, you know, any project has the hypothetical, you know, possibility of costing the city more because the cost to service it would outweigh any sort of net positive impacts it could generate for the city. But this study, you know, looked into the future and, you know, is hopeful that things are not as bad as they are today.
Well, I think, I'm gonna jump in, Norma, and just say that the other thing that would concern me at this point in time is, what are the assumptions? I mean, if it, I mean, Norma's asking the question, you know, can it, can it decrease over time or will it increase over time? And, you know, I guess my first question would be, based on what we've got here for an assumption, is this based on 50% occupancy, full occupancy? Is it considering all the retail being in place, you know, things of that nature? You know, it would be helpful to understand, you know, how was this derived? It's a million dollars and, you know, sales tax, the sales tax itself will go away after a certain period of time. How do we establish, what's the baseline for these findings?
So Chairman and Commissioner, the study looks 25 years into the future, I believe, taking into account, you know, long-term development trends through the year 2047. So it's looking, you know, well into the future. So I can, I can confirm that it's not literally looking at just like the one or two years, you know, ahead of us.
Is there any other assumptions besides 25 years?
But I suppose, you know, if the economy were to enter like a severe recession, to the point where property taxes, property values plummeted, and subsequently, you know, local property tax shares plummeted with it, as well as, you know, virtually, you know, a massive drop in sales tax revenues, then yes, you know, any project has the hypothetical, you know, possibility of costing the city more because the cost to service it would outweigh any sort of net positive impacts it could generate for the city. But this study, you know, looked into the future and, you know, is hopeful that things are not as bad as they are today.
Well, I think that, I'm, I'm going to jump in, Norma, and just say that the other thing that would concern me at this point in time is, what are the assumptions? I mean, if it, I mean, Norma's asking the question, you know, can it, can it decrease over time or will it increase over time? And, you know, I guess my first question would be, based on what we've got here for an assumption, is this based on 50% occupancy, full occupancy? Is it considering all the retail being in place, you know, things of that nature? You know, it, it, it would be helpful to understand, you know, how was this derived? It's a million dollars and, you know, sales tax, the sales tax itself will go away after a certain period of time. How, how do we establish, what's this, what's the baseline for these, for these findings?
So Chairman and Commissioner, the study looks 25 years into the future, I believe, taking into account, you know, long-term development trends through the year 2047. So it's looking, you know, well into the future. So I can, I can confirm that it's not literally looking at just like the one or two years, you know, ahead of us.
Is there any other assumptions besides 25 years?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Meaning again, any other assumptions that would establish the baseline that we've got here today, 1.5 in expenditures and 2.5 in revenue for a million dollars total? And I'm just, I'm just asking again if there's anything that's established as far as, go ahead, Norma, go, please.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think maybe a, a different way to think of it is, is this a best-case scenario or is considered a, of the road, approach is it, is the question for the applicant instead of you?
So we can reserve some of the details of that part, you know, for occupancy and stuff for the applicant, but I will say that this study, just like any other fiscal and economic impact analysis prepared for the commission's consideration, typically looks at best-case scenarios. So for example, you know, full residential occupancy, full or near-full commercial tenancy, you know, in the mixed-use spaces, payment of city impact fees in full, those are, those are kind of the assumptions that are made.
Chair, this is Will Weaconhopper with the applicant. I'd like to add one comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
I think a couple of things to point out. If you look at property tax for the, for the new project alone, that's a very kind of programmatic, mathematical exercise. The project is going to cost somewhere on the order of 150 to 175 million dollars. So if that's assessed, using the state's 1% property tax, that alone is the 1.5 million. Okay? So even if we had to cover expenses of 1.5, and I'm not going to be able to comment on the assumptions that went into the expense side, just the property tax alone will cover the quote-unquote expenses that's analyzed. And so then any sales tax or other revenue generating event add to that. So if we have any occupancy on, and, and revenue on the sales side, then we are in a positive territory. So I just wanted to add that context.
That's fine, thank you, Anna, appreciate that. Norma, do you have any other questions?
No, I think that was helpful.
Okay. All right, um, I guess the, the next question I've got is, with regards to the City of Tustin, you know, there was a request to continue further, and my question is, have we gotten back to the City of Tustin and, and basically said that everything that they requested was taken care of and we've closed the loop on that?
Chairman, so thank you for your question. When we prepared the final packet for the staff report, when we were going through these motions during the past two weeks of researching these additional topics and all that, we were in routine communication with the, the principal planner at City of Tustin, informing him, you know, of the upcoming date of the planning commission meeting tonight, and our goals for publishing the staff report, and, and all that, which took place on Friday. Unfortunately, due to the late nature of their sending the comments to the city, they sent their, their fresh comments, the latest comments, I believe on Thursday before the long weekend, we were not able to, you know, prepare any sort of like response memorandum to them, similar as we did to the two law firms that sent letters to the city. But we did notify them that, again, there'd be additional public participation opportunities such as potential city council meetings, should this body recommend approval of the project to the city council. And so that's where we left off.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to, um, the next question I have, and this didn't come up in the presentation, but the, my understanding is that the project was denied by the airport commission. Can you explain what the next steps are and where we go from there?
Sure, thank you. So on May 21st, the project was considered by the Airport Land Use Commission, or ALUC, which voted 6-0 to find unanimously that the project is inconsistent with their land use plan for the area surrounding the airport. So the next steps, should this commission, planning commission, recommend approval of the project to the city council, the city will need to prepare additional findings of fact in order to basically override the Airport Land Use Commission's decisions. And it'd be very similar to basically what process was followed for the Heritage project nearby.
Because that too was denied, is that correct?
Correct, similar finding of inconsistency.
Okay. All right. Is there any other question, any other questions that anybody has of the staff at this point in time? Commissioner O'Connell?
No, none at this time.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Nwenn?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions.
Okay, thanks, Ally.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, um, we will now open the public hearing on this matter. Would the applicant like to present and talk at this time?
Yes, this is Will Weaconhopper again with the applicant.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thanks, staff chair, honorable commissioners, thank you for your time and patience this evening. I am speaking on behalf of the applicant, and since this is a continuance of our discussion from our last planning commission meeting on May 11th, I will keep my comments short. But I would like to thank planning staff for their continued responsiveness, as evidenced by the report, lengthy report that they provided today with respect to our project, include the questions that they answered for the commissioners, and a number of technical questions with respect to the project DIR. And with this short comment, I'll, I'll turn it back to the city.
Okay, um, Madam Secretary, have we had any comments or written communication on this item?
Yes, Chair.
At this point in time?
Yes, Chair, five comments, written comments were received, and those are posted on our website. There were two in favor, one in opposition, and then two comments regarding a continuance, and then another one regarding a park in Lufies. And that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. What I'd like to, one of the things with regards to the letter before we get into public comments, or, but we will continue to public comments, sorry, because we need to continue that and close it. So are there any other public comments at this point in time besides the letters received?
If any member of the public would like to speak on this matter, please press star nine now. Chair, no, we do not have anyone who has indicated that they would like to speak on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Since no one has decided to speak on this matter, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. I'd like to just, one item that I did note in the letter, in one of the letters that came in, there was a discussion about the parking per unit, and we talked about this, I talked about this briefly before the meeting, but I'd like to get some clarification. It was noted that the parking, the general plan parking goals were 2.5 cars per unit, and yet we're at 2.0. Is there an explanation as to how and why we've got two different numbers at this point in time?
Thank you, Chairman. The figures that were presented in one of the public comments are from the general plan, but for, they're from the housing element, which is a separate chapter than the land use element of the general plan. The housing element was last updated, I believe, in 2011 or 14, forgive me, but it's, it's contents, like any general plan, are aspirational, they're goal-driven. It's the zoning code and the zoning ordinances that actually implement and create the law of the city in terms of regulating, for example, development. For this project, you know, when you, when you consider a specific development zone, like an SD, you custom craft all of the development standards, height, setbacks, number of units, all that, as per an approved site plan, essentially. Can the commission hear me again?
Yeah, are you playing music? Are you, do you have an accompaniment that's playing music for you?
It was such a touching question, I felt compelled to play elevator music, so, um...
There you go, thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Now that I've collected myself again, so the housing elements, forgive me, the housing elements, you know, contents like anything else in the general plan are aspirational and goal-driven, the specific development zone, as the zoning ordinance for the project establishes the specific development standards. Furthermore, in the absence of specific development standards, you know, for case-by-case like this and the heritage, for example, even Tiny Tim and Bridging the Aqua, you look toward best practices in your existing zoning documents. So in the case of this project and many others, the city looked, for example, to the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay Zone, which contains the city's most up-to-date standards. And this project at 2.0 per unit is consistent with many other mixed-use developments that this planning commission has approved, for example, such as the Elon Project, which is also providing 2.0 spaces per unit.
Okay. Are you there, Ally?
I'm here.
Okay. Any, the only, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to be clear that I understood, and let me know if this is not accurate. So, the position is that two, as a basis per unit is what is required, the local ordinances, that 2.5 is, is the general goal for the city? Is that, but not a requirement?
So, thank you, Commissioner. The second part of your statement is correct. So that, that 2.5, for example, those are goals of the housing element, those are not actual development standards in place. For this project, just to revisit the first, the first point that you made, just for the record, the specific development zone that you adopt for each site, like this project site, for example, the standards such as parking, building height, et cetera, those are custom crafted for each specific development zone. But for this one, the city recommended, and the applicant provided, 2.0 per unit, which is consistent with what other code areas that encouraged mixed-use developments also require.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, another couple of questions that I've got there, Ally. One happens to be, are the renderings that were in the last, or in this, this presentation, are the renderings that we're looking at, are those the final renderings for this project? And maybe it's a question we should ask Will.
So just to start the response, thank you, Chairman. Those renderings are the latest that we've received from the applicant. And then as to whether any, you know, changes would be anticipated or all that, we can allow the applicant to speak.
Yes, this is Will. The renderings that you see relative to the open space, those are, the buildings themselves are the renderings and the materials of the buildings, the, obviously, the programming of the space, which takes a creative life to show what can be done in that space. But as far as the materials and the landscaping, those are the final rendering.
Okay. Any, anybody on, any of the commissioners have any questions with regards to the, the renderings and, and the final design of this project? Commissioner O'Connell?
Not at this time, no.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Nwenn?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, one last item, and I'm just going to put it out, Will, and just say that, you know, this is one that I, I may be the only one that's concerned about it, but I will go back and say that, you know, having spoken with a number of people and, and they've listened in on the meeting and planning portion of the, of the meeting from the previous weeks, it, it, it really still, at this point in time, I'd love, I would, I would really like to see a change in name for this project. Because as I said before, the Bowery does not, in my, in its, in its use in other parts of the country and other parts of, or other parts of time, shall we say, going back a number of years, the Bowery was considered a, considered a skid row. And it just doesn't seem fitting to put a project like this up in our city and name it after a skid row. So I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it any other way, but I just would like to see us do something about that and get a proposal of something that might be better suited for this kind of project in the area that it's going to be in, and part of, and being part of San Ana. So.
Chair, thank you for the, for the comment. I appreciate your, your research, and frankly, you gave us the food for thought with our last, in, in your last comments and your comments today. We will certainly consider changing the name. If you recall, we came to planning several years ago with a project called the Heritage. Ultimately, the project name changed, so we are constantly looking at, you know, our marketing strategies and working with marketing teams to, you know, deliver the best identity for the project. And so if the Bowery has a negative connotation, we certainly need to consider that. That's not what we want with this project.
And also understand that at this point in time, that the, the, you know, changing names, I mean, 2525 was changed from Magnolia to Addington. And that was a change that was done overnight, and it was done as a, as a comment, as a, as a dedication to one of the employees who had passed away, I believe, and therefore was called the Addington. I just think that there was something, something that...
That's true. Well, your comments are duly noted, and we will certainly take that into our eyes and, and look closely at the name.
Okay. All right, thank you, Will, appreciate that. Thank you, Ally. And if you want to put some more music on, do a little bit brass band, do whatever you want to do.
Well, Chairman, I, I hate to interrupt with my beautiful voice instead, but we did have one caller who raised his hand digitally just after we posed the question, so, would you...
Let's take that caller, let's take that caller and let them speak.
Caller with the last three numbers, 047, please begin your comments now.
Hi, yes, this is Diane Fratkin, and I wanted to address the planning chair and commissioners. I sent a comment in regards to the park space, and given the size of the project as well as the size of the Heritage project, I think it would be in the city's best interest for the developer to dedicate actual park land for, instead of the in-lufes. And I'd like to also suggest that the 2525 North Vane Street site be considered, as I know the developer has publicly stated that they were interested in perhaps contributing that as open space, park space, because it's adjacent to Santiago Park. And perhaps with some work with the planning department, they can come up with a development agreement that could outline the details of how that would occur, but I think it would be in the best interest of the city's... best interest of the city of Santa Ana to have an actual park site that would be dedicated instead of the in-lu fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any other, are there any other individuals that would like to talk at this time?
No, Chair, no other speakers.
Thank you. Once again, we'll go back and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. At this point in time, is there anything else that any of the commissioners would like to speak about or talk about before making a motion? Commissioner Kanna?
None, none at this time.
Commissioner Garcia?
None at this time.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution as a condition.
Okay. Can you, could you please elaborate on that and make sure that we cover everything that's in there, because it's rather lengthy? So, if you can read that?
Yes. Would like to make the, the motion to approve the adopted resolution, the City Council's Santa Ana Adopt Environmental Finding of Fact and a Segment of Overriding Consideration for the Proposed Project for Southern California Environment Act, certify the final environmental impact report, and adopting the mitigation for monitoring and recording program, providing proposed mixed-use commercial and residential development note at the Bowery located within the city of Santa Ana at 2300, 2310, and 2320 South Redfield Avenue. Adopt resolution, the City Council Santa Ana approving general plan amendment number 20000-02, amending the land use element to district center for the property located at 2300, 2310, and 2320 South Redfield Avenue, and adopt, or, 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 the City Council's approve amendment application number 202001, rezoning the property located at 2300, 2310, and 2320 South Redfield Avenue, comply industrial-specific development number 96, and adopting it as United States Property. Also, I would like to add the, add, recommend the, 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 to change the name of the Bowery to something else.
Okay. So, there's a friendly amendment that you're making as far as the name change?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks for going through that, Ken. I appreciate you doing that. This is, you know, it's, it's tougher to do at this point in time, but it goes on the record, and that's what, that's what we're trying to achieve at this point. Would anybody like to make a...
This is Lisa.
Yes, Lisa.
Can we just recommend, can we just recommend that they research on revising the name of the project? I don't know that you can legally require them to change the name of the project. You're approving a land use project here at this time, so I would recommend that you change the wording perhaps to review and research changing the name based on market analysis.
I agree. I'm totally agree.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Lisa.
Approve on the land use issue, though, not in the name of the project is up to the applicant to choose, but would like to recommend to, to the applicant to research and find something else more suitable for Santa Ana.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Thank you for that. Commissioner Rivera, do you have anything else to comment on? Negative, no. Okay. Having, I don't have any further comment other. I will, I would like to make sure that a number of the questions and concerns that were brought forth in this meeting, not in the last meeting, but in this meeting, that we bring those forward to the, to the, to the City Council when this goes in front of the City Council, specifically items such as the revenue that was noted by Commissioner Garcia and myself on the revenue that's going to be generated on this kind of a project, and also the concern about parkland space and the fact that there was really no parkland space. It's a term that's used. I'd like to make sure we clarify that and make sure that that's understood as it moves forward to the council. And I too echo the, the recommendation to research the name change. Having said that, do we have a second on this motion by Commissioner Nguyen?
This is Commissioner Kano. I would like to second Commissioner Ken's motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kanna. Are there any other discussions at this point in time with regards to the motion? It's on the table at this. Hearing none. We will take it, we will, Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair, the motion passes 5-0 with Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent and Commissioner Fan abstaining.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that, everybody. Now, we'll move on. This is now time and place to consider item number three, condition use permit number 2019-41, and variance number 2019-05 for a project located at 2230 North Tustin Avenue. Please note, the decision on this matter is final unless, unless appealed within 10 calendar days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose with regards to this item?
Um, sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner?
Yes.
Hey, Commissioner Garcia, you are going to recuse yourself on this item, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so...
I will, I will, I will.
So, thank you very much. If you, if you want to come back in when we do our final wrap-up, that would be fine.
Chair McLaughlin?
Yes.
This is Lisa.
Yes.
Do we have Commissioner Fan back on for this item?
That's, that was my next question.
Okay. Thank you. I got you. I'm mind reading.
Good, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fan.
Commissioner Fan, you are, you are in the room.
I am in the room. Thank you.
All right. So, we have still a quorum, and we have Commissioner Kanna, Commissioner Nguyen, Commissioner Fan, Commissioner Rivera, and Chair McLaughlin all here. So, we can go on. Again, before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Commissioner Kanna?
No.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
No.
Commissioner Rivera?
No.
I have none to disclose at this point in time either. So, again, please note, the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 calendar days. Before we begin, excuse me. At this point in time, staff will now present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Ivan Orozco for the record.
Okay, Ivan. Please go ahead.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you stated, this is an application for a new service station and convenience store located at 2230 North Tustin Avenue. And there are two applications involved with this request. One is a condition use permit, number 2019-41, and the other is a variance, number 2019-5. Moving on to slide 28. This area is a location finder for the property in question. As you can see, the two cross streets, east to west is Santa Clara, and north to south is Tustin Avenue. The property is located in the general commercial, general plan designation, and it is currently Zone C5 arterial commercial. As you can see, it's surrounded by several commercial uses, as well as multifamily to the west and to the east beyond the corridor there of commercial properties. Moving on to slide 29. As stated, this is a new development for a convenience store, service station mix. The, the project is essentially a two-story construction of a commercial building dedicated to a convenience store on the ground floor with restrooms, and the second floor dedicated to office area as well as storage. The fueling canopy is approximately 2,100 square feet with eight stations. As well as the building, there would be new parking, landscaping, and perimeter fencing proposed for this development. Moving on to slide 30. The illustration here shows a site plan of the proposed construction. As you can see, for reference, there is a, the streets are titled, so you can see where Santa Clara and Tustin are located to the development, or the proposed development. Part of this project is also required through the Public Works Agency to dedicate 10 feet on the Tustin Avenue. So, this project has taken that into consideration and provided not only the 10 feet for a feature dedication of the expansion or improvements on Tustin Avenue, as well as the required 15-foot landscape buffer for the street. I'd like to also mention, and I can go back at a later time, that there are two entrances to the site. One along Santa Clara, which is an existing driveway approach that will be reconstructed to meet current city standards. And this is the item that the variance is requested for, as the C5 zoning does, district requires any driveway within 150 feet distance of the intersection to be, to have a variance approved for it. It's something that the C5 has, and we have looked into removing, but as it stands, it is a requirement. The other access point is actually an easement that has been recorded with the neighboring adjacent property to the south. And essentially, this easement is to allow for ingress and egress of vehicles, as well as parking. The reason for this easement is to minimize the number of driveways located along Tustin Avenue. So, this is an alternative that was worked out through the Design Review Committee. Moving on to slide 31. As you can see, the, the two images illustrate the proposed first and second floor. As indicated, the first floor is dedicated primarily to the convenience store, along with some restrooms and stairway electrical room. And the second floor is dedicated to a storage area and retail, retail management, staff common area. Could be an office or a break room. Moving on to slide 32. As shown in the illustration, this, this is the proposed elevations for the building and the fueling canopy. As indicated and described in the staff report, the architectural style is not typical to what we've seen in the latest construction for modern, contemporary, but it is meant to fit in with the Tustin architecture along the corridor and to blend in nicely with the property to the south. Moving on to slide 33, project analysis. The project will provide an added service to workers, residents in the area. It's also promoting development as the site has been vacant. The site plan, as mentioned, has been designed to mitigate any potential impacts related to ingress and egress, and as, as I provided in the easement description. There have been conditions of approval that are added as part of the operations to mitigate any potential negative impacts on the surrounding uses, as well as the hours of operation, as I will continue on the next slide. And then, the project is also consistent with Goal 1 and 2 of the general plan land use element that promotes balances of different land uses, as well as promoting an economic and fiscal viability. Moving on to slide 34. This is continued project analysis. The conditions of approval will provide for hours of operation in order to, in the future, if the applicant does wish to provide additional hours, which we call after-hours operation, between the hours of 12:00 AM and 5:00. A separate CUP would be required for that, and then it would be, it would go before the planning commission for a decision. And lastly, the economic benefits, as stated, this, this development would definitely generate property tax, as the property is currently vacant, as well, as well as sales tax for the operation of the service station. The calculated permit fees are stated in the description in the staff report, and it'll also create temporary jobs during construction, as well as permanent jobs to be able to operate the service station. And with that, staff has finalized the presentation. Moving on, I'm sorry, moving on to slide 35. I think it's active now. And staff recommends the approval of both condition use permit number 2019-41 and variance number 2019-5 as conditioned. This concludes staff presentation, and I am available for any questions you may have.
Does the commission have any questions, Ivan, at this point in time? Commissioner Kanna?
No questions.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, I do have one, one question. Does the applicant request any alcohol to, to be sold, or put in anything at this service station, convenience store?
The applicant has not indicated their, the need to sell alcohol. It wouldn't be approved as well because of the proximity requirements for off-sale. So, even the question to submit an application would definitely, the answer would simply be no. It wouldn't be allowed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Rivera?
No, no question.
Commissioner Fan?
Hi. Yes, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. My first question is regarding some of the conditions of approval. It looks like they're the same for both the variance as well as the CUP. And I just wanted to make sure, because really do this, I don't see any requirement for, I guess, the vines, because we, you know, we do know that we have a graffiti issue in the city, and I do appreciate conditional, condition number seven for removing...
Just to be sure that I'm understanding the question correctly, is this related more towards a landscaping plan that would potentially mitigate any graffiti through the installation of vines?
Yeah. So, normally, we've had this kind of issue with some other...
That is up to your purview to, to make that slight modification on the, the condition there, number seven. Just to, just so you know, and for the rest of the commission as well, as a development project, we do request a formal landscape plan. And part of the review is to identify certain areas of the, for example, walls of the building or the perimeter walls for the property, any potential locations for graffiti, and then we always ask for creeping vines, that sort of thing, to help mitigate with that issue. So, although it's not stated here, we do review that at a later phase with the landscape plan.
Yes. Condition number three.
I believe so, but I believe the applicant would be better at answering that question. I moved the slides over to the floor plan so you can see what the commissioner is mentioning, but I'll leave that question, if you don't mind, to the applicant. I think it's part of the overall operations of any store to have those entrances and exits I'd like to answer the first question, if I can, regarding the driveways, and then I'll answer the bus station location question. As far as the driveway locations, because it is a small property, and I say that relative to other properties that have more street frontage, we're dealing with a corner property, and in addition to the C-5 requiring variances for any driveway located within 150 feet, it does become a little difficult to design an operation such as this as a service station to actually have two driveways for ingress and egress, especially for the fueling trucks, delivery trucks, or even just the refuse pickup. So essentially, the location of the driveway on Santa Clara was determined based on the maximum distance from that intersection, as it is the safest route to have an entrance there. And again, it's considering all things. The preschool that is located just to the west has that pickup by the parents. It's not a traditional public school, as, you know, kids walking home from school or walking to in the mornings. But the location essentially comes down to what is the furthest point from the intersection where we can put a driveway that still allows proper circulation of all vehicles, whether it's customers or even just the fueling vehicles. And the driveway locations was something that we really had to work with, along with Public Works. Essentially, as I mentioned, the additional entrance to the south of the property, that driveway location would have been exactly adjacent to the existing one of the southern property. And so, one way to try to design away from having two driveways right next to each other or a very long driveway that doesn't meet code requirements, is to design this easement to be able to use an existing driveway to minimize any potential accidents from people exiting and entering and trying to cross from one property to the other. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Chair, and...
Let me ask you, is the, given that, given that the entrance and exit is at that north end of the lot, south end of the lot, sorry, where, up adjacent to the preschool, is it going to be left turn as you're exiting? Is it going to be left turn or right, is it going to be right turn only and no left turn?
Right, so both driveway entrances for the project, or the driveways that anyone is able to use to access the site, will be right in, right out. There is a double yellow.
Right in, right out.
Yeah, there's a double yellow on Santa Clara, so it's an essential median. So no left turn would be allowed, and we have added a condition of approval stating the installation of signs at both exits of the site that indicate right turn only.
But it's also close. I mean, that particular, that particular entry and exit is also close. If you go look across the street, you're going to see the.
Del Taco.
Back end of the State of Brothers and to the, I play Del Taco, but I think there's an entrance right there. I'm just concerned that somebody's going to take off from the gas station, go right straight across Santa Clara and into State of Brothers.
I completely understand. During the posting, I actually saw that for myself, and I was there for no longer than 10 minutes. I think it's, it comes down to, and, you know, again, it's an indication of a double yellow, it should be a median, but people end up doing.
I mean, you would, you would think that it would work, and you'd think even the fact that the CHP office is a half a block away.
Yes.
That it would be that way, but it isn't. I mean, people will jump that double line easily just to go in there, so, you know, I'm just wondering how we're going to protect this particular situation as best we can.
Yeah, I think the consideration was taken to try to avoid those situations. It just, you know, conditions that we've added to be able to at least have that on record, make sure that we've done everything we can on-site to help, you know, design and approve a project that'll mitigate those situations. But I think, you know, to what you're leaning to is more human nature, and it's a little hard. But we do everything we can on-site, even as vehicles exit the site.
Okay. And my question about the bus stop on the, on Tustin Avenue?
Yeah, so for your second question, it does appear that there is a bus stop along the frontage of the property.
Right.
On Santa Clara. I mean, I'm sorry, on Tustin.
It's on Tustin Avenue?
Right, it's on Tustin, sorry. I do apologize for that.
So how does that, how does that play into this design? Because according to what you've presented, it doesn't play into that design.
The site plan that's provided here does not show or illustrate the sidewalks. It is showing where the existing property line is and where the proposed property line will be once Public Works takes on the 10-foot dedication along Tustin. So you're still missing the sidewalk. This bus stop will still continue to be there?
Well, we're missing sidewalk, and we're also missing any type of median that would be there, as well as curb.
Right, this is just the nature of the site plan that was provided to indicate the dedication.
Okay. Nohin? Commissioner Nohin? Commissioner Rivera?
No, no question.
Commissioner Fan? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ivan. Appreciate your, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have, and those have been posted to our website. We received a total of 14 letters.
Can you, Sarah, can you get moved closer to the microphone?
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. Yes, Chair, we did receive written correspondence, and those were posted to our website. Nine of those were in favor, and there were five in opposition for a total of 14 letters received.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. We will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter at this time?
Just one moment, we're unmuting him now. Applicant, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, members of the chair and the commissioners. Thank you, Ivan, for the presentation. You know, we really have done everything we could to provide a, you know, that aesthetically appealing process and project. We've done outside of landscaping areas, we're providing seven different plans to screen up adjacent properties from the schools. We're applying some sustainability features, such as bringing solar panels in the area. We've done a full traffic study, and we've made sure there is no considerable impact on traffic on either Tustin Avenue or Santa Clara Avenue. And the applicant here is providing the latest technology for safety and hazard control, especially for emissions and air quality control, and that will be performed throughout the lifespan of the building. Okay, one other note that I would like to make is that we've, we're sharing the driveway with the strip mall, and that was essentially a suggestion by the city design guidelines and Ivan to make sure that we are actually mitigating the impact on traffic.
Okay. Do you have any other, any other points that you'd like to bring out at this point in time?
One other point that was, that was brought out about the vines on the building, yes, we have actually in the current landscape design, we are showing vines all over the, you know, covering the building.
Okay. All right. And again, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
My name is Beruth Buzorgniel.
Okay. All right. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Beruth? Commissioner Kano?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Nohin?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no question.
Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, thank you for your comments. My question is, that's a follow-up with, my question to staff earlier, which is, will the entrance of Santa Clara stay open for the duration of operating hours?
Yes.
Okay, great, is that just general practice? Or, I guess, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, no matter what, we have all of those entrances available to pedestrians and to folks, which makes sense. So, you know, it's just general practice for your business?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and I just had one question, because I thought I understood something in your presentation. If I look at the, if I look at the elevations for this item, looking at the map of the air, the plot, are you saying that on the left-hand side, there's an entryway from the strip mall next to you that provides cars the access to your facility? Yes, not just Santa Clara?
No, the driveway access is through the adjacent property, essentially, through the strip mall. So we're sharing the driveway access through the strip mall, and also, we have a driveway on Santa Clara Avenue.
Yes, so you got the driveway on Santa Clara, and then you also have, you also have driving, driving into the strip mall and coming back to your facility.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering that question. Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant at this point in time? Hearing none? Thank you very much. Secretary, have we received it? Sorry.
Phone comments.
Yeah, do we have any phone comments at this point in time for the public?
Yes, if you'd like to speak on this matter, please dial *9 now. And Chair, we do have two, we have three actually now, so we will start with the person with the last three numbers of 388. Please state your name, your position on the item, and your comment.
Good evening, commissioners and Chair. This is Mike Tardif. I'm a resident of the Portola Park neighborhood nearby this proposed gas station. I'm opposed to that gas station and convenience store there, corner of Santa Clara and Tustin Avenue. Convenience stores tend to attract transient and homeless. We deal with this problem in our nearby neighborhoods now, and we don't want to make that situation worse. There seems to be some issue with the driveways and traffic flows. A drive be that close to the intersection of Tustin and Santa Clara, I think will cause some problems. I also have a question on the shared driveway. A person traveling south on Tustin Avenue, making a right-hand turn, rather than making a 90-degree turn into the gas station, will have to make like a 135-degree turn. It doesn't seem like a very reasonable entrance point if you're heading south on Tustin Avenue. That is going to be a problem for, I think it's the donut shop that's right there. There's, there's people that park right up next to the donut shop. This is going to be, that driveway there on Tustin Avenue is going to be interference with the people who park in front of that donut shop. Those are my comments. Thank you for the opportunity. I am opposed to the project based on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Next caller is with the last three numbers of 914. Please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment.
Yes, my name is Kent Mueller. I'm a property owner in the city of Santa Ana in the Woodwood North condominium complex, which is adjacent to the project. It's come to my attention that proposed development at 2230 North Tustin Avenue in Santa Ana raises several environmental concerns that are as follows. One, a gas station proposed within 100 feet of a preschool. Number two, a gas station proposed, or proposed gas station and convenience store 250 feet from the condominium complex, Woodwood North. And also, the proposed variance for a driveway 150 feet from the intersection of Santa Clara and North Tustin Avenue. Due to the nature of storage, sale, and dispensing of gasoline in general, my, I'm, excuse me, I'm opposed to the development as it stands now. And one of the reasons is gasoline contains several volatile toxic compounds and shouldn't be dispensed, stored, or sold in your schools or domiciles. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
Okay, we have another caller with the last three numbers of 722. Please state your name, your position on the item, and your comment.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Colton. I live in the Grand Prostate neighborhood, and I'm very familiar with this intersection. I, it's big people, picking my speaker up. And I have issues with the fact that a gas station, mini-market is going into that neighborhood. It sounds to me as if they're really, they've done a lot of planning, but they're really forcing, they're really forcing this project to be contained in there. There's a lot of issues that were already brought up by the prior person of speaking about the condo nearby and also the preschool right next door. Also, conflicts with traffic in that intersection are going to be really difficult. On Santa Clara, you've got the driveway right next to the preschool, and then, when people are going south on Tustin, there's a bus stop right there. Buses are going to be pulled in. Buses are going to be pulled in. The visibility is going to be really bad when people are trying to make a right turn. Then going into that one little one-way driveway where the donut shop is, is already dangerous. As it is, it's going to get worse. And I see that the vision of Santa Ana is that we require safe and healthy community. We want neighborhood pride. The mission of Santa Ana is for high quality of life for the residents. And I don't see that this project in, on this particular corner is going to satisfy or, or benefit any of the vision or mission of Santa Ana's, um, statements. There's other projects that could go there that could be a lot better suited for this area. And it would be great to have some other ideas because I think this one really is pushing the safety issue, the health issue. And I just am totally opposed to having a gas station mini-market in there because we already have a mini-market kitty corner to it, right by Starbucks. We have gas stations within a mile at every other, um, intersection around north and south and east. It just doesn't seem like we need that particular thing to be added to another intersection that's really going to be a negative impact. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Secretary, do we have anybody else that wants to speak at this time?
Yes, we do have a few more callers. Caller with the last three numbers of four seven seven. Please state your name, your position on the item, and your comment.
Yes, uh, my name's Dale Helbig. I'm against this project for some of the reasons that, uh, Mr. Tardif and Mr. Mueller stated earlier. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned that a tanker truck coming in and out of that, uh, facility is going to have a hard time negotiating getting in and out of the, uh, facility for one. I think having a gas station next to a preschool that's been there for over thirty years is wrong. I think there's going to be environmental concerns, uh, for the kids that are going to that school that, uh, we can only imagine in the future will be detrimental. Uh, it took us years to understand that asbestos and lead paint was bad for people. And I think we know that, uh, having a gas station that close to, uh, a preschool is wrong as well. Uh, I'm opposed to it because there's other things that can go in there. Uh, it's, it's trying to squeeze it in there. There's a lot better things that we can do with that property to make it good for Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, next caller with the last three numbers two seven six. Please state your name, your position on the item, and your comment.
Yes, hello, my name is Philip. And, um, I'm in support of the project. Um, I think this lot has been vacant, uh, for many years. I think having it be a beautiful business, um, with landscaping and somebody monitoring the site will be actually beneficial to our community. As a vacant lot, not only is it an eyesore, uh, but I, uh, have witnessed, um, homeless people and others loitering, um, and as a vacant lot, it's unsupervised. So I'm actually in support of the project.
Thank you. And we have one, um, final caller, however, where it looks like it's coming from a private number. Um, if you have, would like to speak and you haven't had the opportunity to do so, please, um, do so now. State your name, your position on the item, and your comment. Is there anyone else who has expressed a desire to speak on this matter who hasn't had the opportunity to do so? Please speak now.
Hello, hello, hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please state your name, your position, and your comment?
Sure, my, uh, hello, Commissioners and staff, thank you for your hard work on this. My name is Steve Brand, and I actually own the property under the gas station, and I own the strip mall next door. And I was pleased to buy the property three years ago. The property had fallen into disrepair during the years that it was there. We're very excited to have a gas station, interested in the site. As you all know, this site has been vacant for twenty years, I think, even more than that. And we've had a terrible issue with homeless people hanging out in this lot. I think somebody else said something about that as well. Um, somebody asked about the tenant and the convenience store being a magnet for not-so-good folks. Well, actually, I have visited about five or six other gas stations and convenience stores owned by the people we rented to here, and they run a very, very first-class operation here. I think that, uh, people that live nearby will find a great convenience to come to be able to shop here for things that they need, um, as well. It's always run very sharp, very clean landscaping, so I think everybody will like it being here. Um, you know, we've really tried to improve the strip mall below here. We've done improvements to it. The strip mall is very well occupied. It's, uh, it's basically a hundred percent occupied. We have one very, very small office space empty. The Department of Defense is there, H&R Block is there, their restaurants, dog care are there. And we've always tried to keep the rent low and affordable for people to be able to run businesses, mom and pop businesses there. We're excited that Starbucks went there below, and this gas station fits perfectly into this site. At the beginning, they had wanted to have a lot of other things here, a car wash and things like that. And those were all removed. The city was very, very strict on what they wanted here and reduced the, reduced the size. We were glad that we were able to provide an easement between the strip mall and the gas station here because without that, it would not have made sense for the gas station to have been built. But because we provided the easement, which really combines it all into one, uh, consolidated property of sorts, it works well.
Caller, please wrap your comments.
Um, I'm sorry, what did, I'm sorry, what did you say?
We have just reached the three minutes. If you could please wrap your comments.
Oh, be happy to, be happy to, thank you. I was just going to, I was just going to end by saying that there was a gas station on this site previously, thirty years ago, and we're bringing it back in a very safe and healthy way here. I think all the issues that were discussed, were raised, are being addressed. The gas station is safe, the double tanks, all the laws that, that protect, uh, the public in the gas station will be here by this very, very top operator of gas stations, housing many, many gas stations around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad.
Chair, we have another caller on the line. Caller with the last three numbers one zero zero. Please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment.
Hi, this is Lacy, and I'm calling in support of the gas station.
Thank you.
Um, knowing that there was a gas station there in the past and that the city has changed its zoning laws to maintain this safety now, I believe is more beneficial to the community than a vacant lot to sit for another twenty years. Um, I think we need to keep business in the community booming. And I know that the law has had a lot of issues with homeless people and people loitering and hanging around. And I believe that building up something there to...
Okay, thank you, Lacy.
And Chair, there are no other callers who wish to speak on this item.
Okay, hearing none. We will, um, close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Commission. Um, Commissioner Canno, do you have any comments at this point in time?
None at this time.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I have no comment, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
Um, the only comment was, um, it was right to my question earlier, um, related to the vines. I know that we do have the landscape and irrigation plan. Um, it does list some of the items that we want to have included in the landscape and irrigation plan. I would like to see that we add, um, the phrase or sentence indicating that, you know, the vines used to cover these blank walls, um, will also be, or probably ivy, um, will be substantial and that it's not going to be something that will take, you know, five or ten years to grow. But that's the only comment I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fan. I guess the one comment I have is that, um, you know, I, I tend to agree with some of the statements that were made about the fact that we're putting a gas station extremely close to a, a preschool. And, um, I guess my first question is, have we engaged conversation with the preschool? And what is their request or requirement at this point in time? And how do they, how do they see this project as, as being proposed as it is today? How do they see it with respect to their thirty years being a preschool in that, in that same location?
Chairman McLaughlin, this is Ivan again for the record. In regards to communication with the existing preschool, notification was sent out. Although the school seems to be closed, uh, due to the current situation with COVID- nineteen, uh, and, uh, no further communication was able to, um, or made with the school at this time. Um, they did receive the mailer. Uh, there was no, um, mail that was sent back from this address. And so that is the outreach that the city has had with the property, uh, operation and the property owner.
Well, okay, I, I understand, I understand we've had a significant change in our lifestyle for the last month and a half, two months. But the fact that we've received nothing back from the preschool because they're closed, and we can understand that, I, I just, I, I would feel uncomfortable if we went ahead with this project and found out that the school, you know, had serious reasons why this wouldn't be the right thing to do. And, um, I, I tend to also agree with some of the comments of, you know, this is a nice project. It's a nice project, um, but is it the right project for this location?
Uh, all things, oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll get to Beruth Bosorgnial, the applicant. We've actually reached out to the school, and all they asked for was a solid wall around the property. And that's why we're providing a big, big, uh, CMU solid wall around the property. We're also screening up the, the school with over a hundred trees of California native, low drought-tolerant tree. So the property is completely screened with landscaping. And, and CMU, solid CMU wall goes around the property. The school is, has no opposition of having the gas station. And we've reached out, the owner with the, uh, my client has reached out. We've had several communications with the owners of the school.
Okay.
Chairman Vince Pergoso here.
Go ahead, Vince.
Uh, we received a letter from, an email from them at five-ten this afternoon. So that's why probably people didn't see it, it was mixed in with a couple of the emails. It was from the owner of the Plumtoad School, Kim Cordova. Uh, it's a very brief email, I'll read it out here. While I do not oppose the driveway issue, I do have concerns with a twenty-four-hour gas station that has solid alcohol next door to the preschool and kindergarten. And I believe, as Ivan mentioned, it is not twenty-four hours and are not selling alcohol. And then her other comment is, I am requesting that a cinder block wall that can withstand a car at thirty-five miles per hour be erected along the property line. It should be built before any construction takes place on the property due to children playing on the opposite side. So, I mean, her only comment was get that, basically, a, uh, just an engineer, strongly engineered wall there on the, be the west property line.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I think that's information that we needed to, I think we needed to hear that. Because they are probably the only, only, uh, individuals or in this area that are impacted by it as, as close as they are, you know, the hundred feet, two-hundred feet. Uh, there are other areas that can be impacted by this, but I think the preschool is, is the one that we need to understand the best.
Yes, that's correct. Vince, was that, was that email sent to the planning commissioners? No?
It was, no, at five-ten.
I know it was late, I know it was late.
Yeah, it came in from the city clerk, uh, at, from about the five-thirteen we got it, so. It came, uh, from the clerk's office, the planning commission comment, and the city clerk, where it went to.
Okay.
So I can send it out really quickly if, if that's the wish of the commission. But I pretty much read off what, what they said, it was like four or five lines.
Yeah, I would send it to them.
If you would send it, that would be helpful at this point in time.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Lisa, for that, uh, comment. At this point in time, no further comments. Commissioner Canno, uh, any other comments you have?
No, I just want to say that, um, just because the school hasn't been involved, given the circumstances, I do want to be considerate of them. And I would be voting no unless they can be part of this discussion.
You're voting no unless they be part of the discussion?
Yeah, if they were here and be able, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, this is Lisa. If I can be clear, the school has been notified, they got all the public notices and were invited to any public meetings, so they have been involved. And then the email that Vince will be forwarding you that came a little bit late tonight should also show their position. But that is, of course, is your, your own decision. Right, so I was thinking about it, and you know, just given the circumstances that we're living in, they're very different. So I do want to be as considerate as possible of them. And so, um, that's why I, I would be, I'd probably no because it's important to include them. But I hadn't seen the email yet, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah, what's that, thirty seconds ago, I'm sorry.
No, I don't have any comments. Uh, I would like to, um, raise a motion to adopt the condition use permit two-zero-one-not, DAS four-one as condition, and to adopt the, uh, through the variant number two-zero-nine-das-zero-five as condition.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Uh, do we have a second to Commissioner Nguyen's motion?
This is, uh, Commissioner Rivera, I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Do you have any comments, Commissioner Rivera, at this point in time with regards to the project?
Yeah, as, as far as the, um, involvement of the school, I think it was, I think it's pretty clear, um, some of their, some of their concerns with the retaining wall and the twenty-four-hour, um, use of the, of the facility and the sale of alcohol without, we're not having those, those, uh, conditions or, uh, the retaining walls being taken care of. There's not a twenty-four hour, they're not selling alcohol. I think, I think, uh, those, uh, those, uh, concerns are, are taken care of. So I'll be seconding that.
Okay, Commissioner Fan?
Uh, yeah, I really appreciate this, um, correspondence from the Cordova. Um, it, you know, they are the most impactful party here rather than the applicant. And I do appreciate that staff and the applicant addressed all the concerns that were raised. Um, the only thing I would do is I would ask to amend the motion to include, um, that we add a condition of approval, or at least amend a condition of approval number three, um, to require, you know, the vines to make sure that, you know, those are good and dirty and that they will protect the property from additional graffiti or any graffiti.
Commissioner Nguyen, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, I would accept it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioner Fan?
No, that is all, um, I really appreciate that the applicants and staff did reach out to the, um, daycare and the property owner and worked, you know, on this project. I think that it's really important, especially during this time, when you have, you know, we need economic development in the city. And this spot has been empty for a very long time. And I'm excited to see a responsible business owner, um, comment, hopefully something that will, you know, be beneficial to our residents.
Ivan, uh, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Ivan, a question for you again, I, I don't have in front of me, the hours of operation?
Yes, uh, Chair, the proposed hours of operation are five AM to twelve AM, which would, uh, follow all, uh, Santa Ana Municipal Code hours. Uh, if they do wish to do after-hours operation or offer that service, they would need to come back before you, uh, for that, under a separate condition of use permit.
Okay, I, I guess one of the things that... Okay, I guess one of the things that I would be concerned about, that was brought up, and we've had this, we've had this discussion with other gas stations/ convenience store discussions, and that is, is that given that the nature of the preschool is next door there, can we make a, I guess I'll make a friendly amendment, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that says that deliveries will, will be, they won't, they won't have deliveries for the convenience store or for the gas during the hours of operation for the school.
Do you accept the friendly amendment, Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other comments or any other points to be made at this point in time on this item?
Commissioner McLaughlin, Chair McLaughlin, we do have condition 18 that states that goods and fuel delivery shall not occur between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Is that sufficient, or do you want to change that one?
Well, 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, they're not open, they're not, they're, they're closed at 12, and they're opening at 5. So what you're basically saying in that particular statement, it would be a two-hour window that they would take deliveries, which would, which would be 10, 10 to midnight. Am I, am I missing something?
This is Barus, the applicant again. I just want to make a note that the, the gas station itself, the stations are 24 hours, the market is closed for those hours.
So the gas station is 24 hours?
Anybody can go up to the gas station and slide their credit card to get gas, but the convenience store will be closed.
Correct.
So then, condition number 18 is the one you might want to look at, Chair McLaughlin?
Well, Commissioner, on that particular item, number 18, it says from 10, 10:00 PM to 5, 5:00 AM, did you say?
7:00 AM, 7:00 AM, from 7:00. No deliveries from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Okay. And what I'm, what I'm asking, what I'm asking for is that if the preschool is in operation and people are being picked up and dropped off, that if they're going to be doing that between the hours of, say, 8:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon, that that would be the other time that we would not have deliveries.
Right, right, so I think, I think this condition addresses your concern.
How, no, I can't see that it does. It's, this condition, again, if I read it correctly, understand it correctly, I don't have in front of me, 10:00 AM to 7:00 AM, no delivery.
10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
No deliveries.
So no deliveries, so I don't know what the earliest drop-off is at the school next door, you might want to clarify that.
But let's just say for sake of discussion, it's, it's, it's 7:00 AM is the first drop-off. So I'm just saying if the last pickup is at 4:00 AM or 4:00 PM, or it's something of that nature, can we control the traffic and the trucks coming in and out to make food deliveries and gas deliveries during the time that the school is in operation? Is that something that the applicant, is that something the applicant would entertain?
Yes, so we've actually, we've actually come to find out that when a gas station is closed, it's actually a safety hazard. So we would like to keep the gas station and gas delivery open at all times, however, food delivery and the market will be closed during the hours.
Okay, I'm not, I guess, I'm not sure I'm clear on my point, or there's a misunderstanding I have.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? Excuse me, go ahead. I have, Mr. Chairman, if, if, frankly, you do not want to have any delivery during the school hour, school hours set from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so we can modify, like, in good, delivered, no, not, at 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM following day. So that would cover it, doesn't it?
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I had, I understood what you just said, because it's, I'm getting some feedback.
I, I, but, but, the man who said you could, do not wish to see any delivery occur during the school hours. They, they square, 7:00 AM to 4:00 AM. So we can, we can, we can change the condition number 18, so good and deliver, occur between 10:00 PM to 4:00 PM the day. So if we can deliver, you only could have, you, occur between 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
That's when the deliveries, that's when the deliveries would occur.
That's right.
And then you could have delivery, you could also have delivery between 5:00 in the morning and, 5:00 in the morning and, and 8:00 in the morning.
Well, yeah, we'll do that, but I don't know how, the word is that, it's not in them.
Excuse me Commissioners, I have Mr. Farzan Qadifi, who's the, the owner of the gas station and the operator of the gas station here, he wants to speak at the hour.
Okay.
Good evening, Farzan Qadifi, the developer of the gas station. I just want to clarify hours and logistically what is possible, what is not. As far as the 24 hours, we like to be, the gas to be open for 24 hours, simply because we need to keep somebody there for safety issue, aside from the, the, the fact that there's really at midnight, it is not that many cars that come in. But the point is, if we shut the station down, this is increased safety hazard with homeless coming in there, with, with people that, they come in, they, they vandalize the place. We have this situation with gas for the all the time. So that's as far as that goes, the, the fuel would be sold through the drawer if they need to present their credit card, but the technology is there, they can use it as a bomb. But we have somebody over there, so if they want a water or something, or a band-aid for that matter, they can just get it through the drawer. That's number one. As far as the delivery, if I can clarify this, the fuel delivery, I can set it up for evening where the school is closed, that is not a problem. When it comes to the delivery of the food, there is different type of a, a small truck coming in, delivering sandwiches, or there are, the chips delivery would be set out, I, there is, there's impossible for me to set up a certain time for everyone to come in, which actually will not make sense anyway because it's going to be a congestion. So if that, it's, it's not a, if they're not a huge truck, they come in, they deliver the truck, the merchandise, and they go. You know, if I could have set that up for them to come in at the evening, it would have been ideal for me. I just want to make sure clear that logically, it's not even possible to get everybody in there, to set a certain time window for them to come in and deliver the food. That would just paralyze my business. So as far as the gas delivery, no problem at all, we'll set it up that it's delivered in the evening where the school is closed anyway, that I can do. I just hope you understand the situation, I want to make sure that it, it's a possi, it's possible to, to do something like this, so. And we have a dedicated parking for delivery as well, so it's not like they're going to come in all over the place, there's this dedicated delivery. And I will try, I will do my best to try to set it up times that the school is closed or times like this, I will do my best, I, I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's not by choice, it's just the logistics of it, it's common possible. With that, I thank you very much. If there's any question, I'm here, you can ask me, I'm listening.
One more question, yeah, one more question I have that come to mind, is, is, this is strictly gasoline, there's no propane with this?
No, we're not, we're not going to have propane, the only propane that we like to have, again, is for the convenience of people, is just the cylinder, which is, usually is in a cage, small cage, maybe 10, 10 of them, 12 of them, I'm not sure exactly how much they can hold, but, you know, it's not a, it's not a crazy, it's not a really big problem center for us, it's a convenience, customer comes in, they want to have a barbecue or something over the weekend, they can.
So you are going to, so you are going to, you are going to sell propane?
We, we don't have to, I'm just saying, if you, if you're okay with, we can, it's not, are eliminated, it's no, no impact on my business, really.
Well, I guess the question I would have is, if you're going to sell propane, where would it be sold from? The front of the store?
No, we're not going to plant, let's put it this way, we're not, let me, let me clarify it, no, we won't sell propane.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just want to, you know.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
This is Ivan for the record, I do want to highlight that we had added a condition number five that limits the hours of operation for the convenience store and the service station. Now, code does allow for a gas station to operate, but not the convenience store component to operate between midnight and 5:00. And so if the operator wished to have just the gas pumps available between those hours of midnight and 5:00, the code doesn't restrict that, but the, having someone in the convenience store selling the products, the retail items, that would identify as a convenience store and therefore the CUP would be required. I wanted to clarify that for you.
That's, that's, that's a good clarification, I appreciate that Ivan. Okay, so at this point in time, go ahead, Ken.
I apologize, this is Commissioner Fan, I just want some clarification because once that letter came in from the daycare, I believe that it was under the understanding that there will not be a 24-hour gas station operating, and because conditions in a COA 5 indicates that it will be closed between 5:00 and 12:00, that the convenience store and the service station will be closed. But I think the applicant's comment just now indicated that there will be a 24-hour pump that individuals can come up and use their credit card. I just want to make sure that we're clear that both the convenience store and gas pumps will be closed between 5:00 and 12:00, or if there is a reason not to have that, that we, you know, clarify the COA.
Thank you Commissioner, I, the reason I wanted to highlight that condition number five is, these conditions are listed in order to provide the safest operation, the best non-impactful operation on all the adjacent properties. So that's the reason that we added these conditions, I think it is the forum though, for the applicant, for Farzan and Barus, to be able to request a modification of condition number five to allow the gas station to operate remotely without having the convenience store open. I, I want to bring that up so that it's clear, and so if any requests to modify or amend these conditions happen, that this is the time that we do it and clarify it and make sure that the conditions are in black and white.
Okay, so, as the, the motion that was proposed by Commissioner Nguyen is to approve these resolutions for the Varian and the CUP with conditional, condition number five, which means that both the convenience store and the gas station, the pump, will not be used or open between 5:00 AM and 12:00 PM.
That.
That there is not going to be a change to the condition.
That is correct, Commissioner Nguyen motioned to approved as listed in the conditions of approval.
Correct, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any, any further comments, questions, concerns? Madam Secretary, can you read back the motion, please?
Sure, so Commissioner Nguyen motioned that the item be approved as recommended by staff, and then we have a couple of friendly amendments, one by Commissioner Fan to require substantial vines be added to protect the perimeter walls from graffiti, and another friendly amendment by Chair McLaughlin that there will not be any deliveries during the hours of school operation, and both of those amendments were accepted by Commissioner Nguyen.
Okay, correct. And my understanding though is that the, there will be a restriction on fuel being delivered, and that will be an evening delivery, that would be between, you know, let's say 5:00 o'clock or 6:00 o'clock and 10:00 o'clock. And then, as far as the food or, or drink delivery, that's going to still be throughout the day.
So Commissioner Nguyen did come back and state that he would be open to amending to have no deliveries from 10:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and, and the gas deliveries, I'm sorry, the gas deliveries to occur between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM. And then the applicant stated that the grocery deliveries, that that would be difficult to schedule in the evening hours, so he requested that the hours for delivery for groceries not be, not have any restrictions.
This is Commissioner Fan, may I make a comment on that?
Go ahead.
So I, I do understand the plight of the applicant, it is very difficult, you know, usually with delivery windows, and to be frank, you know, any services, they give you, you know, a four-hour delivery window or something like that, and I am concerned because there are a lot of items at the convenience store, different vendors for food and drinks and things like that, that it could be very difficult to schedule, you know, those between the hours of 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM. However, may I suggest that we request the applicant, you know, attempt or try his best to, you know, schedule deliveries when it is not rush hour for the school, because if the students are in, you know, inside, say, between 10:00 AM and, and 1:00 PM, they're not, they're not outside per se, I'm, I'm not really concerned about the congestion at that time, but I want to make sure that the applicant, the operator has flexibility in having a broad variety of items at the convenience store. So I would just ask that maybe we change it to him doing, you know, using good faith effort to schedule at a time when it's not high traffic for the preschool.
I, I can take that amendment. Ken's good with it? Okay, Ken's good with that?
I'm supporting it, because I do understand what the, the business operator, it's difficulty to, extremely difficult to schedule a delivery certain hour, and I do agree that the, the students are in class from, say, from 9:00 AM to around 12:00 PM. So, you know, we, we, we have put in too much restriction on, on the, again, for business, it's very difficult, the business they were able to operate, and then, and again, you know, they, that guarantee for failure. I, I do support Commissioner Fan's suggestion and amendment.
Thank you Ken. Okay, Commissioner Fan, thank you for your suggestions. And having said that, we have a motion and we have a second, any other comments at this point in time? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, will you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Canno.
May?
Commissioner Garcia has been recused, Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes 4111 with Canno voting no, Commissioner Garcia abstaining, and Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, appreciate that. And thank you for your time and, and this, uh, putting this together for the, Ivan, Ivan, thank you for your time putting your presentation together and everything else. Um, at this point in time, we will go to final comments, does staff have any comments at this point in time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Mintai, uh, hope you are having a good evening. Um, just want to have a few, few quick comments, um, as, you know, the city has been closed, um, since early March, mid-March actually, uh, to the public, and our planning commission meeting has been operating on a remote basis. Um, as the governor, uh, continued to move forward with the reopening of the state, uh, we are in stage two, and even as recently as, um, this afternoon, uh, looking at early stage three. However, um, as we, City Hall prepared to reopen the public, we are anticipating that we will be fully reopened to the public to access City Hall, um, uh, on June, uh, June first, uh, this upcoming June first. The goal is to be able to provide service to the public, uh, both at the counter and over the phone as we continue to do business during COVID nineteen, um, but our services will be based on our ability to have safe distancing and also have, um, equipment and, and, um, you know, the adequate, uh, measures in place as recommended and, uh, guidance by CDC for, um, health distancing, healthy distancing and sanitation, sanitizing, um, uh, components. So we are looking at reopening City Hall to the public, uh, on June first. With regards to planning commission, we will continue to be hosting the public hearing and planning commission hearing remotely until we have, um, additional measures in place for the council chambers, uh, and when that resumes, we will be able to, well, hopefully resume, um, some of the, um, planning, uh, commission functions in the council chambers. So, um, with that, I also want to share, and some of you may have already seen, um, our goal is to get the planning commission to go paperless, um, and the COVID nineteen, uh, pandemic has hurried that process along, uh, Sarah is, should I reach out to you or will be reaching out to you shortly, with new equipment for the iPad, uh, and getting you trained up to the use of the iPad and the paperless agenda as you've been getting used to, um, and our goal is to deploy that in June, um, so if you have any questions or any additional training or any technology questions that you may have, please feel free to contact our planning staff, uh, as we will move towards the paperless, um, agenda which has been a goal, a department, I know, for a while now. So those are my comments, and, um, I thank you for your patience tonight with some of the technology gap that we have, but, uh, we made it through, so thank you.
Thank you, Mint, any other staff? Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I forgot, yeah, yeah, Vince forgot, so just want to let you know that there will not be hearing on, a meeting on June eighth, but there will be a meeting on the twenty-second with about four items.
So June twenty-second is on June?
Eighth.
Eighth is now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that information. Okay, any other staff comments? Okay, we'll go on to Commissioners. Um, Commissioner Kato.
No comments, thank you.
Has Commissioner Garcia rejoined us or is she gone for the evening?
She will not be rejoining us tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen.
I just want to, um, thanks behalf for, for, for diligently work, work, you know, trying to very best to try to put on the meeting, our meeting agenda, technology, everything else together, there was a very challenging time of the COVID nineteen, um, for, you know, appreciate the information from the planning director, Mintai, regarding to the city reopening, uh, I understand a lot of, uh, city businesses have been put on hold, a bit delayed, and the city, the only way for the city to be able to function and do better so that we need to reopen, but with safety concern, um, that, you know, and feel that we can able to, uh, sustain the measure can put in place, I, I strongly support the decision that the planning commissioner, uh, meeting can be conducted virtual meeting like we are doing now, I think we did this fine with this virtual meeting. Again, thank you, all of the staff, uh, have the, for your value, for it.
Thank you, Ken, Commissioner Nguyen.
Uh, Commissioner Rivera, sorry, my, uh, no, no comments.
Okay, um, Commissioner Fan.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Nguyen said, I really appreciate staff's effort to hold these virtual meetings, I know that it comes with a lot of technical difficulties every time, but I really appreciate that we also have public comments, even though under the executive order, um, it's not necessary or required to have it live, and I, I really do appreciate that, I think it gives our residents as much input as possible, and, um, I just appreciate that and I, I like them, so, um, I look forward to having the next one with y'all.
Great, great, thank you, Commissioner Fan, um, I'll just make a few comments, again, kind of reiterating what Commissioner Nguyen said, is that, you know, we've had some difficult challenges, I've had, I had my own personal challenges with my computer here this evening, so I apologize for, uh, having had some issues there, um, I think that, um, as we transition, this process will become a lot easier and probably the norm for all of us, and it's probably to everybody's benefit, um, but I thank everybody for, um, uh, the support and help, and, um, with that, I will call a meeting and adjourn the meeting of the, uh, planning commission for the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-sixth, sorry.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-sixth of May. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, take it, Chair, have a great night. Yep, have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for doing everything.
Thank you, you guys have a great night.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye. Wait, was it the twen, Vince said the twenty-second?
I think he was saying, I'm adjourning the meeting of May twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
So he's saying I'm adjourning tonight's meeting.
Oh, I thought he said, no, I'm adjourning to.
I thought, I, this meeting.
Oh, because he's supposed to adjourn it to the next meeting, he's supposed to say June twenty-second, whatever, okay, whatever.